I'll call to order the work session meeting of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, April 15th, 2021, 6:00 PM. Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Excuse me, Mayor Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Here.
Councilmember Cagle.
Here.
Councilmember Hilton.
Here.
Councilmember Witt.
Here.
City Manager Dorsey.
Here.
City Attorney Litchford.
Here.
Thank you. The one item we have on this work session is to discuss the liquor certificate of compliance applications. I'll hand it off to our City Manager now.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna start by turning it over to Assistant City Manager Custer, who's gonna lead us off with a little introduction.
Yes, Mayor and Council. A few things we want to discuss as we go through all these applications and these presentations. I just want to go back to the ordinance and hit a few highlights that's been noted throughout the review of all these. There's no sense of referring back to this every single time. I think that if we hit it up front and cover it, just a few key points, I think it'll provide some clarity as we go through this process. I'll start with 8-309, limitation on structure containing liquor store. Section 8, it says all liquor stores shall be subject to applicable zoning, building, city land development regulations unless specifically stated, otherwise herein. So zoning is for uses. Also under zoning is our parking, signage, all of our building and lot safety codes, city land development regulations as it relates to any kind of floodplain or anything like that. So you may hear some of that discussed throughout this meeting, but I just want to keep that, you ought to keep that in the back of your mind as we go through that. The next section is 8-315, the application portion. One portion that's noted during this is the off-street parking space and off-street loading and unloading space to be provided, included the vehicle access to be provided, these areas to a public street. That was on there to determine basically how the parking's gonna sit relative to the site, how that impacts right-ofways and stuff. So that'll be something else that we come back to throughout this meeting. The next section and the last section that we will cover briefly will just be restriction on issuance of certificate of compliance. No violation of this chapter or no certificate of compliance shall be issued unless the license issued on the basis thereof can be exercised without violating any provisions of this chapter. So as we go through these, we'll discuss things, we'll probably ask some questions, but I just want you all to keep those, as we've spent a lot of time going through and really diving into the details of all these, some of these will probably come back up, so just keep that in your mind as we're going through this process. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Kenny. What we did after we got the 18 applications, I reviewed them first, then I passed them on to Assistant City Manager Custer to review, to look through them. We also met with City Attorney Litchford on these applications. Then we also gave them to our inspectors. So Inspector Michael Howell and Mike Lynn Jr. also looked at these applications as well to make sure, we had quite a few eyes looking at it, checking codes, checking regulations and zoning requirements and things of that nature as we went through this process. What we're gonna do is we're gonna start on the west end and work our way east via the addresses that we have for the different sites. The addresses we have are, and what happens is, let me start with this, during this process there might be a building that more than one applicant is interested in, which is fine. What happens with that is that the applicant may get a contract, what's the word, Mark?
Well, a contingency.
Thank you, contingency contract, which states that they would, you know, purchase the land or do whatever if they are awarded the certificate of compliance. So it's okay to have, there can be more than one per site that turns something in, so that's okay. Just want to make sure everybody understands that. With that being said, the addresses that we have are 3903 Ringo Road, 3940 Ringo Road, 1502 Maxwell Road, 5603 Ringo Road, 5711 Ringo Road, 5715, they're all Ringo Road after this, 5800, 5901/5911, and 6,009 Ringo Road. Those are all the nine addresses that we have received applications for. We'll start at the top and work our way down, as I said, and as I ask questions, the council is also free to obviously ask questions, and I'm gonna ask for input from the council, and then as we go through on some of these, we'll probably make some determinations as the meeting progresses. Any questions on that, from anyone? No? Okay. Let's start at the top with 3903 Ringo Road. We have three there, and I apologize if I butchered the names. Pragnesh Patel, Kenai Bialo, I'm sorry, Patel, and Alan Huey. Those are the three that are first up on Ringo Road. So we'll start with the first one, which is Pragnesh or PJ Patel. If you'd come up, please, sir.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And with this, and so what we're doing, like I said, we're going through all of these certificate of compliance applications with the council at this point to make sure we're on the record and that we are staying as transparent as possible with all this, so everybody knows everything that we know and the questions that we've asked so far, what we've done tonight. So we're just, like I said, just trying to be as transparent as possible with this.
Right, and may I add, this is the first time that the council has seen...
They just saw the applications like five minutes ago.
Yes.
Yes.
And City Manager, this is, some of these, we represent a broad range of clients. Mr. Patel that's here is one of a, he's been a client of our firm, I just want to make sure that we're transparent on that. We've met with Mr. Patel and told him we would not be helping on anything with respect to the applications, and so we want to get that out there. I do recognize some of the names, Mr. Patel here, I mean, we have not, we had that discussion.
Okay.
So some I just don't recognize if we have, but just want to put that out there. In terms of, some I don't recognize as to what may be a client, some of them, sometimes we have corporations, and we don't always know the owner, but in any event, for transparency, we've not done any with respect to the applications.
Okay, thank you. So for 3903, we also have a site, the site plan for 3903 up on the screen up here for the audience to be able to look at, for everyone to be able to look at as well. So with this, the proposed name is gonna be Express Liquor Incorporated. Going through it, they have a purchase and sale contract in place, so like I talked about, a contingency on the property. And if you look at the application, it talks about other businesses that they're engaged with, the Express Mart on South Seminole, the business will operate as an express liquor. Going through here, if you go to, and they provide their copies. The next section dealing with their application is the individual questionnaire, which is also part of the application. Is everybody following where I am? The next staple section, individual questionnaire relative to application for certificate of compliance. Going through here, you say that the capital you propose to invest is $2 million. You also state the source of your capital is personal capital and bank finance. And I'd ask to state in detail, and there's no detail to this, so what does that entail?
As far as the personal finance and the bank?
The personal capital and bank finance, yes.
Yeah, I do have a letter from the bank, you know, backing up my statement.
So you have a letter from First Volunteer Bank that preapproves you for the $2 million for that. Then you have your, so this is the only funds that you'll be borrowing for the...
Anything...
The site.
Yes, sir. Anything above that, I will use my personal capital, pretty much, that's, I think it is enough to build the building and stock the inventory.
Okay, and you're the only source of capital? Are there any other, no other investors, or?
There are no other investors, only me.
Mr. Dorsey, could you state that bank name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. First Volunteer Bank. Oh, I see the loan says Smart Bank on it. On the application, it says Smart Bank.
I do have relation, I do have an extra letter from them, too, so whichever one gives me a better deal, I'll go with them.
Okay, I'll bring that one, too, because that matches what's on the application. Thank you, Kenny. Thank you. Okay, okay, that one doesn't actually do, that one doesn't actually preapprove you for the certified letter, it just...
They have...
It just says that you're a client of Smart Bank, but doesn't approve you for the loan. Okay, but you have First Volunteer. Okay. With that being said, I'll just put them in here. Okay, with that being said, if we go further through this, we see the names of your references And continuing down that path, if we go to, and Mark or Kenny, if you want to jump in any points, let me know, I'm going to the site plan next, which is what we have up on the TV screen as well. The issues we had started dealing with the site plan. On this, we show the fact that it's 50, I think it's 55, 20 square feet for the whole building, and 43, 13 square feet for the product display area, is that correct? If I'm reading it correctly.
That is right.
On here, you show the restrooms, the cigar room and office, service counter area, your walking cooler. You don't show any storage on here, and part of the ordinance states that you have to have storage separate from the sales floor, you just can't stack the boxes inside the retail area of the liquor store, nor on here is there storage, so I don't know if storage would fit in this building with the configuration you have here, because you still have to stay above 4,000 square feet, obviously, for retail, retailing on here. The other thing that we noticed, and this, I'll keep going first, and with that being said, the amount of parking spaces needed for this, Mr. Custer, would be...
Yeah, so based on the zoning requirement, which was either obtained or submitted to most of the firms, if not all, that requested those, for a C2 commercial district, building under 25,000 is four spaces per 1,000 square foot. So it's 55, so you're at a minimum, best case scenario, 25-ish for your parking spaces, and right now we're showing 13, which is deficient as it relates to the current standard.
Yes.
One other, and I'll note on that, and I'd say that's probably based on that lot configuration, it's a pretty tight lot as it is to fit everything on there, but with that, with those numbers and that being as that deficient, where we really run into more of an issue is any new change of, any new change in a building status, major change, major renovation, anything that's gonna, once a building is raised and it's within a state highway, TDOT is requiring it to go through their plan review process. When it goes through their plan review process, as it relates to curb cuts, now, right now there's no curb there, so it's just open. They will not allow a business to go in where you actually have to back a vehicle within the right-ofway. So as this currently sits, you could lose your first, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven more spots, and that would make it, that would create a severe deficiency for parking.
Because there'd be no way to come in with a curb cut, there'd be no way to come in with a curb cut, pull in, and then put parking spaces in.
There's two things TDOT's not allowing. One, for any new building that's going in, they're not allowing you to back within the right-ofway, or if a sidewalk is installed, you're not allowed to back over, your bumper's not allowed to leave that area and go over a sidewalk, that's through all TDOT programs, and they sent us the guide just recently on that.
It's the manual for constructing driveway entrances, the 2015 edition. It's section 2.1, where it says you can't construct a driveway-related encroachment on state right-ofway, highway right-ofway, I won't read all the way through, but it says if you increase the number of trips, and as he said, if the change of the building happens, and we double-checked with TDOT to make sure that this would work, and I can't remember the gentleman's name, Zach?
I don't recall his last name, this is...
I apologize for that, I can look it up. But with that being said, I wanted to verify this, because I'd known before, I dealt with this issue in another city. But with that being said, there's, those front spots will not be allowed when they put a curb in there, because that's TDOT regulation. An engineer would have, if an engineer had helped you, he would have been able to tell you that, that you can't do that. So unfortunately, with those things being said, I don't see how this property can hold a liquor store, just by, with that configuration, because there's no way to have the parking, especially when TDOT comes along the front of this, like I said, and requires curbing, there's no way any of these spots can fit.
It's, you're, look, I mean, realistically, based on rough math, you'd be left with six spots out of the 25 required, give or take.
I do have my engineer here with me, she can answer some of that questions. Jessica, if you want to come.
Well, I'm the architect who did the site plan. I don't have, I mean, we didn't employ an engineer, like a civil engineer for this project. I'm just not, I'm not sure what leeway there would be to obtain that parking with, because the required setback from the street will be required, right? So you can see on the site plan that we're all the way up at the setback line on the front side of the street, and already encroaching on the backside of the street as far as the setback line from a road front, so...
Oh, I'm sorry, real quick, can we get your name for the record, please?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, my name's Jessica Albert.
Spell the last name.
It's A-U-B-E-R-T.
Thank you.
So that site, the way it currently sits, I believe it's a little, it's a challenge site. It's a good site, but it's a challenge site based on the size of what you have to construct there. You can go five foot from the edge of right-ofway to build in front, to sidewalk, that is something that is allowed within the C2 commercial zone.
Okay.
Would allow for parking in the rear, I'm not sure that that gets you over the hump unless there was a potential to do some 90-degree off of Old Ringo Road.
Okay. And I wasn't aware of that five-foot requirement. The zoning ordinance we received, I think, had that setback requirement, and so that's what we tried to, you know, address as many of the requirements as possible within the confines of the site. Certainly, storage could be accommodated with just a small reconfiguration, but as far as the parking...
And variances are, you know, anybody can request the variance through the Board of Zoning Appeals, but there's no way that tonight I can sit here and guarantee that they're gonna...
Right, I understand.
They would grant a 40% variance, you know, greater.
Plus, Kenny, we also talked about with these, with the parking spaces like this, depending on what the building is, you know, if it's a large building with not much occupancy in it, you might be able to get some sort of variance on that, but with being a liquor store with all the customers that you would have in and out, I just don't see the parking, the parking working.
Yeah, just with it being retail sales, like I say, it does make it a little bit challenging. The five foot from the edge of the right-ofway here does work, it is a little challenging, the right-ofway's actually quite wide. We do intend at some point in time to take that sidewalk program through the front of this, the store. So that would be, you know, if this were to go and that selection was made, that'd be something that would need to be, you know, planned in the beginning phases of the build-out period, so you don't come back four years from now and then it's a right-ofway acquisition and you're already right at your front door, so...
Right.
So with that being said, I'll look for some input and some, if the council has any questions on this, but unfortunately, the way this is drawn, I don't, the liquor store can't work.
I just have one.
Yes?
Is this building here, if it does go through, is it gonna qualify for two entrances because of Ringo Road and Old Ringo Road?
It could. That still won't help with the parking, though.
Yeah, because Old Ringo Road, we can control that access through planning, but the Ringo Road access, they're very limited. Matter of fact, they, they're not willing to really do any new curb cuts on Ringo Road, they're wanting all to be existing. And even if you have a current business and you wanna, you can pick any business on Ringo Road and they want to modify their access from Ringo Road, they also want that to go through their review process. And that timetable is not something that I can give you. You may have a better idea on TDOT right-ofway review for driveway access. I mean, I've dealt with a right-ofway review on a sidewalk project for, you know, two years.
For a driveway, they will not let you back out onto Ringo Road.
That makes sense.
So, any other comments from...
Yeah, I've got a question, maybe for the architect. I can see this is probably gonna be an ongoing issue, maybe not just for parking, but the minimum square footage that we got in the ordinance, and it, just curious, if, let's say the minimum square footage for the liquor store was 2,500 instead of 4,500, would this be, do you think this would be an ideal lot? Could you change that structure and accommodate the parking? Do you think it would be possible?
Yes, I do, because I think if you were at 2,500, then you're at 12 parking spaces. Is that right?
I mean, I'm...
I'm doing the math, and so I think that you could accommodate the parking in the liquor store and everything.
It looks like we got three applicants right here for the same property that's gonna have the same problem across the board. And I, so I'm just kinda looking into the future of what may need to be happening if we're here, keep running into this.
Well, we still have a little ways to go, yes.
Yeah, and as we go through some of these, you're gonna find some repetition, and that's why I wanted to cover some of that in the beginning, because as it states, if it's not something that we can pass based on what the provision is today, then we can't, we can't offer the compliance, so that's why this process is valuable.
Well, if, okay, let's say, so you're pretty sure that you could make those parking requirements at a 2,500-square-foot structure, what about 3,000 square foot?
This is so...
I know you gotta probably do some measurements, but just ideally, do you think it would...
I'm just looking at the drawings, if I could move the building all the way to five foot within the property line and get parking through the back. You said you would get parking through the back, right?
Yeah, I could potentially do rear 90s or something.
Yeah, and I think that you could, I mean, these parking spaces are scaled correctly, so one, two, three, four, five, seven, eight, nine, 10. I mean, I'm probably maximum 13, the length of the building, six on the side, so if you're, if you're keeping that curb cut from the back property, you're probably 13 and six, so like 21 spaces, and divided by four, that's putting it, I guess, like 5,000 square feet, yeah.
One of the other things that we also have to consider is the storage space, you mentioned that.
There's space in here, and there's other, there's other properties on the west end that, on District A, that could still accommodate the 5,000, because we're not through this process yet. There could have been other properties they could have picked besides this one to make it fit. Trying to squeeze down for one property, Vice Mayor, as opposed to other properties they could have used to accommodate this to begin with.
Yeah, I'm aware of that.
There'll be a lot of properties that, that it could fit.
And it may be where we want to take notes as we go through this and then circle back around, because we're gonna come up with some of these same questions on some properties, and then obviously up to you all, what our next steps are.
But with that being said, right now, they don't, they will not be able to put a liquor store there based upon the requirements we have right now.
That's correct.
So this property will not qualify. Just wanted to throw that out.
No problem.
But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
No problem.
The other two that are on that property, other, Mr. Patel and Mr. Huey, the same issues are gonna exist for you two as well. Obviously, if you go through the application, which is very similar to this one, being it's on the same property, you have that same sort of issue that pops up. So that property basically won't, wouldn't suffice at all for a liquor store. You two are welcome to still come up and appear before, say if you'd like, but I can tell you right now, the properties don't qualify.
And the reason being is, the site plan that he's referring to in your packet is the same, is the same building, site plan for all three.
The store plan and the site plan is identical to the, okay.
Can it be redrawn on Tuesday night?
So I'm not gonna speak for the council or the city manager, but as the applications were in, that was the application deadline, so similar to doing a sealed bid, once a sealed bid's entered, once you hit your time period, now, I'm not saying that that can't be changed or modified, I'm just saying as it sits right now, at this moment, that hasn't been changed
So that means at this moment that all three of those on 3903 Ringo Road do not Anything else from the other two at 3903 Ringo? No? Okay. I'll move on. Next, we have 3940 Ringo Road, which is Hosh Patel. Hello, sir.
Hey.
Um... Do we have theirs up? On this one, I can get my notes, I need a bigger desk. On Mr. Patel's, he has the, a contract here, that contingency contract, say it right, Mark?
Mm-hmm.
For this property, it's right next to the CVS at, like I said, 3940 Ringo Road. If you go through, you are, you are involved with one other liquor store, but it's in Cleveland, Tennessee, correct?
Yes, sir.
Red Hot Liquors, so that's allowed, you're allowed to have two within the state of Tennessee.
Yep.
So that is good. Second page, we talk about Ringo Wine and Spirits, that's the name you're looking at. We have your references in here. If you go back to the questionnaire, showing approximately $2 million that you're gonna invest in capital, did you bring a letter or anything from the, if I may please? Thank you, sir. From Southern Heritage Bank. Turns relationship with Southern Heritage Bank, and changes upon Saffrey completion of due diligence, collateral verification, so it's basically your loan proposal and term sheet from them for the $2 million.
Yes.
All right. With that being said, what other capital would you use on this project?
If we need any additional funds, then I'll use my personal funds.
See your references that are in here. Reference letters all the way through. If we go to the site plan for this site, okay, you're proposing to purchase, it's like two parcels under there, right?
Two parcels.
One's Ringo Road, one, and the other one backs up to John Ross, right?
John Ross, yep.
With that, you have the size of the liquor store at the 73, 150 for the whole building, you show the sales floor area at 40, looks like 46, 50, I think.
46, 50.
50, you show storage of 14, 37 square feet, so you have that in there as well. So the building meets the parameters. How many spaces would I need for that, Kenny?
So they actually have the parking calculations depicted on that, for the required C4 space, is four spaces per 1,000 square feet.
So they have plenty of spaces.
That's great.
So the site plan's okay. We have their purchase-sale agreement. Kenny or Mark, either of you have any questions before I ask counsel if they have any input? No? Okay. Counsel, which includes Mayor, obviously. Nothing? Okay. As far as I can tell, this application is okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, with that being said, those are all the applications on District A, so we will move over to District B, and we'll start with, and I apologize again for, if I butcher any names, uh, Miramal Patel at 1502 Maxwell Road. It's a little out of order, but I'm just, that's the only one that's not on Ringo's, we'll hit that one next. How are you today?
Good, how about you?
Good.
Just for clarification purposes, uh, I, I know this does say it's a 1502 Maxwell address, but, um-
Oh, thank you.
So everybody's familiar with that location, it's the, the complex where J103 was, it's the out parcel out front.
So one side's on Maxwell, the other side is on Ringo Road?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Okay. We go through, you have an option to purchase the property contingent upon this. Um, if I go back to the individual questionnaire part, uh, you have $2 million in capital, through smart bank as your plan, did you bring a, a letter from them?
Oh, sure.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so this doesn't actually do a loan certification letter, just says you've approached them for a loan.
I also have a First Volunteer Bank approved loan.
Okay.
I apologize, what, what bank approval note did you say you had?
Uh, First Volunteer.
First Volunteer?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. That shows preapproval. Okay, as we go through, if there are references here. Um, oh, with that, the one question I was asking, if, if I asked this, I apologize, I think I did, um, what other financing would you use, did I say that already? What other financing would you use besides the, um, the $2 million, if you needed more for that, for capital?
Um, I also have personal fundings, which I can use, or I can try another bank.
So there wouldn't, there's no other, there'd be no other investors in this store? It would just be you?
Uh, no, it's just me.
Okay. All right, with that said, we have the references, let's go to the site, the site plan for that one. It's up on the, it's up on the screen. Uh, this one, you have the, the total building square footage at 8,166 square feet, but your total project, product, display areas at 7,100. You have the, your cigar room, the office, the closet, but you do not, on this one, you do not show any storage either. And with the amount of storage, I'm not sure if it would fit within the 7,100 square feet you have on here still. Um, in addition to that, uh, can you fill me in on the, the parking that would be needed, um, Mr. Custer?
Yes, so again, we go back to the, um, four per 1,000, uh, that's, the requirement is roughly gonna be somewhere around 32 spaces, plus or minus, uh, the ADA spots. Currently shown on the plan is 19 spaces. This, uh, property pretty much runs property line to property line, you still gotta take into account, um, current landscape requirements. Uh, I do understand that, um, the current owner of this property, uh, did have an agreement at one point for shared space, um, but that shared space is not known here, um, for the additional parking.
Yeah, what you meant, with the next door property?
Okay.
And that would give us about 15, 20 more parking spaces.
Okay, but it, it wasn't in the application packet though, correct?
Uh, no.
It's, it's not in our application packet?
Uh, no.
It, was it in the lea, in the potential lease agreement, was it in there? Because I didn't notice it either.
I think it should be.
Okay. Let me, let me double check that. Chris, you have that full application?
Yes. As far as I know, it says nothing about other parking spaces. Contingent upon being selected by lottery for purposes of being granted certificate of compliance. So there are, there are no other parking spaces that have been committed. So it falls short on the parking spaces, and like you said, there's landscaping requirements that are involved too, as, as well, correct?
That's correct.
Um, did you mention a storage space issue?
Storage is not on here, and you're right at 7,100 square feet, you don't even have storage yet. Um, so how that would fit on this schematic, I don't think it would. So, and on the front, you would have the same issue, the, on the Ringo roadside, um, where the property line is, right there, you'd have to have, what, at least 10, you'd have to have, you'd only be able to have a curb cut there, looks like you try to, there's a wide open curb going onto Ringo Road, they won't, the state won't allow that. So there, you would have to come in at one spot and be able to park in front of the store. Whether that works here, I don't know. But you're still well short of the amount of parking spaces you need, plus, like I said, with that property line, you're showing a wide open curb cut, and T-Dot, Tennessee Department of Transportation won't allow that. So with that being said, any input from Mark or Kenny or the council?
You know, either way, I mean, when we were dealing with these curb cuts, and it's, it's an unfortunate circumstance that we have this, but, um, you know, going through a T-Dot review process is, is, can be a daunting task, uh, and I'm, I, like I say, I'm not sure of their timeline.
But even with that review process, I've dealt with curb cuts in other cities.
Yeah, they're, they're-
They're not gonna allow this.
Yeah, they're denying curb cuts.
Yes, they will not allow this. They'll allow you maybe a 40, uh, 30 or 40-foot driveway at the most, but they will not allow a wide open curb cut. So even be able to pull in and put these parking spaces here, I don't know if there's enough room. But you're also still well short of the, uh, 13 spaces short of all the parking spaces you would need on this property, and there's no agreement for other parking that's included. Um, comments from other councils, so at that point, it doesn't qualify. Any comments? Or guidance? So, and some of these, I don't know, make a personal comment, I don't know how well you all looked at the ordinances on this, but the ordinance has specifically talked about, you could not store on the retail floor of these buildings. You had, they could either be at an end cap, or, and that's it, otherwise, you know, you, you have to have storage, so it's not on the floor. And on here, if you're at 7,100 square feet with these, and you have very small things in here as it is, with the office, the, the cash register and that, I don't think there's enough room for storage on this property, along with the, uh, the, um, parking spots.
It says 8,166 and then 7,100. So they've already got drawn out the, uh, the thousand square feet dealing with the, the offices, the restrooms, and the small cigar room. So how you would fit storage in here, I don't know. Right, but then that brings you down below 7,000. Right, so I don't know how it would, storage would fit. So at this point, I would say this property doesn't qualify. Uh, next we have 5603 Ringo Road. Um, I'll start with Mr. Swat, Swatay Dival, Swaty Dival. Again, sorry if I mispronounced it.
Good evening.
Hi. Can my husband join with me?
Pardon me?
Can my husband join with me?
Sure.
You might wanna tilt your microphone down a little bit. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening there, good evening, council.
Good evening.
Good evening. Okay, so on this one, we have the, the properties at 5603 Ringo Road, which I believe is where the bucket, right? Owned by Jesse Langston and Teresa King. Okay. Uh, if we go through, you plan on purchasing the property? Um, okay, you have a, a business in Trenton, uh, tobacco and beer store. Uh, Eastridge Wine and Spirits. Through here, no problems. Oh, and I will say, I forgot to mention this earlier, I apologize, we did a background check on all the applicants that we could, and they all came back okay. We had one with a misdemeanor, but that doesn't qualify for this, it has to be a felony, so it's just a small misdemeanor, so-
One we couldn't complete.
One we couldn't complete, which we'll get to, yes, thank you. So, if I go further back, the individual questionnaire, you, uh, you plan on spending about $2 million for the, the store?
Yes, sir.
Um, and your source is your personal funds and a loan from the Bank of Cleveland, you have a-
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, so you've been pre-approved? Okay, thank you. Um, if that's not enough, um, because your, your approval goes to 2.5, um, how else would you plan on financing this?
I'm planning to use my personal funds.
There's just yours, no other investors, nobody else?
No, sir.
Correct? Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Go to the site plan.
All right, would you like for me to start with that?
Please. I need water anyway, so thank you.
So, uh, overall building square footage is about 10,000, um, 15 square feet, large facility, um, sales area of 7,030, um, 1,700 in storage, large storage area. Uh, you also have a parking detail, uh, for a required number of spaces of 40. Um, you do have a total number of excess, you have 55, so you've got positive 15 on your parking. Um, one thing that I will bring up, so that, that actually looks good, I just wanna make sure, as you were planning your investment, and, and hopefully you are, and did a little bit of due diligence on the property, to understand that that property sits 100% within the 100-year flood plain, um, which will, I, I'm not quite sure what the elevations are on that. Um, that does slow your process down a little bit, but it's not a process that has to be stopped, because it's just sits within the 100-year. Um, so that is a manageable project, um, but just be mindful of, of the time constraints that you could run into with, you know, having to raise something, uh, one foot above base flood, and the, the, the way that process divides up is, you have to get, you know, once you get to ba, base floor level, have to come out and, another, you get elevation certificate and make sure that everything's squared away, but, so based on everything we see, it, it does have some, a few challenges, just because it's within the flood plain, but it is, it is a qualified project at this point.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions from council? Mr. Litchford, you've been quiet.
I don't have anything to add.
Saving your, I'm kidding, thank you.
Covering it well.
Yes, thank you. Um, so as far as I can see, this one is acceptable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One thing I may add, um, just, just if you were to, um, receive the compliance letter for this and be selected, uh, I, I know we've talked about T-Dot a lot, but sometimes you don't think about it, but when you're having to do those elevations, that's one thing that they're gonna need to approve, whatever your, your, even though you thought your setback may be something, you may have to set it back farther, further, because of the elevation gain, and to make sure that that transition at Ringo Road meets what their standard is. So just keep in mind that your building and, and stuff may have to be a little fluid. Okay?
Make sure the engineer knows about it.
Yes, sir.
The engineer, yeah. They have plenty of room to do that.
Absolutely. That's a large site.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the other one we have is Hasmuk Patel, if I said that correctly? Uh, it's for the same site, um, like we talked about, with a, a contingency for the, uh, the, the site. Um, as you go through, uh, we have the, the questions were answered, the Eastridge Wine and Spirits, popular name, um, Ringo Swob Corporation be the app, is the actual applicant, um, amount of capital, 2,505, um, personal funds and bank loan, um, and you say your loan would be with through First Horizon. Did you bring a letter or anything dealing with?
Pinnacle. Uh, I'd like to mention for the record, I'm the project manager for this site.
Oh, okay.
This is Arkansas Alia, and we have a approval letter from Pinnacle. I know it said First Horizon, but I didn't have time to, we can submit one with First Horizon as well.
Thank you. Okay. You've contacted them, but they haven't, there's no preapproval on this.
You can make sure, he didn't want to put in the final number on the letter, so you can contact the Terry to confirm that it's been pre-approved. Yeah, Keith, sorry.
But this doesn't say it's pre-approved, but it says they're, they'll, they'll be happy to review the request.
Uh, yes, but-
Okay. So it's not pre-approved, okay. But you have, you've already made contact with the bank. Um, as we go through, our problem we had on this one, uh, we, we have the, um, the letters and everything, the, the application dealing with the, uh, background check and all those sorts of things, the main, one of the main parts of the application was never signed or notarized. So, that is a huge problem.
That was-
And I can show you my, if you have your copy, you can, it's not signed or, nor, nor, nor notarized. So it's an incomplete application at that point.
Uh, it was checked, uh, when we submitted, she checked it, uh-
Well, she hasn't, she just accepts it. She's not there to check it, she just accepts the application. Because I'd asked, I'd asked a lot earlier at one of the council meetings, I even said, if anybody wants me to look over these things, I'm more than happy to help look at them, but mine, mine shows it's not signed.
I don't have the actual physical copy.
Here, you can look at this one, it shows it's not signed or notarized.
Uh, she flipped through them, and she made sure whoever the person was, because we both came to submit it, and she made us submit a letter as well, that said everything was in order.
I don't know about any letter or anything, all we do is have a clerk up front that would just turn them in. Right? I mean, there's, yeah. Nobody would've, no, and, uh, you know, we, we've noticed with some of these, there hasn't, there hasn't been a lot of, uh, either pre-planning on them or, um, preparation on them to, to make sure that they've, they've looked into some of these items that we have, that we've talked about today. Um, but on this one, it has not, it's not signed or, or notarized. Besides that, if I look at the, the diagram, you have the, the sales floor and the storage is okay, but parking spaces look okay, Kenny?
Uh, just, my apologies, did you see storage?
Yeah, it's along the, the back, all the way across the back.
What is the storage, 1973? Is that what it says?
Yes.
1873.
I'm sorry?
1873.
1873, thank you.
1873. 11,000 square foot building. Sales area, 7864, storage, 1873. But... Okay, so I have the original right here. Original. Original, the first part of the application.
Wrong diagram.
There's a signature, but no background could be done because the for the application, there is, no, there is, there is no signature or notary or anything on the original. You're welcome to come look at it. It's, so, I'll ask Mr. Litchford if he has any comments on that.
No, were you all able to perform a background check?
No. Because the application is not complete.
All right, so, we've got 8 section 308.7, which is a decision that the council will make as to whether or not the applications fulfill the requirements. We have here an incomplete one, by virtue of the background check not being able to be performed, so the manager, leave that something for, we'll address that with the council when they want to evaluate these for purposes of section, or chapter 8, section 308.7.
Sort of what we're doing now, yeah. Which is why we have counsel involved tonight, so they can see every application that we have and hear the discussion. This is the first time we're having discussions with the applicants on these issues. So to me, it's, it's an incomplete application.
Okay, so when this, obviously this is a working session, when we, we're going to have to come to the approval process of it under 308. The council can make a determination if you all want to determine that as an incomplete one here, if you all want to determine that this one is, it did meet, there was a deadline, the deadline was the first or early March. If you have an incomplete one here, no background check was able to be performed.
The approval process you're talking about is also what's the, the standard Certificate of Compliance approval process. After the law, after the drawings were done and it comes, then the council has to sign the Certificate of Compliance, that's what you're referring to.
Yeah.
As the approval process, not whether or not the application is, that's where you're certifying the fact that they are, that they don't have a felony within the last 10 years, that it meets all the zoning requirements, that's the standard form that the council approves and signs, either majority of the council or the mayor. This is the part where we, we make the decision, or I make, I make the decision, I guess I should say, on whether an application is valid to go forward to the next step. But I'm wanting input from counsel and let them make sure they've, they've heard everything that we're discussing here at the exact same time. To me, it's not signed and notarized, it's an incomplete application.
Is there any other counsel want input on this? If the manager makes the final decision, and I think what he's looking for is any guidance the council may want to provide.
I'd just like to get a clarification on where this is going to be located. This preliminary site plan gives the address of 5607.
It's...
I've been given the address, it's 5603.
Both the lots have the same address, 5603.
Okay, well, it didn't say that, yeah.
So it's incomplete. I'm sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have, I think I have them in reverse order, but that's okay, we'll go, you want to do 5711, Kenny, or 5715 first? I guess 5711 is the next one in order, yeah. 5711 Ringo Road, Pathic Patel, Pathic, sorry.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
Hi there.
I just wanted to take a quick minute to address something on this building. I did the design for four of these different applications, and I just didn't address the storage, which I'm seeing consistently, and that was something that I missed. But I'm looking at the remaining ones, there was one that I did for 5711 Ringo Road, and one for 5800 Ringo Road. And, and both of these have like excess space in them, and areas that we can create storage that's off the display floor and still maintain the 7,000. I realize it's not represented on that plan, but you can see the total space of the building versus the display space, and there's enough room in both cases to create the storage that's needed, so I just wanted to address that.
Okay, thank you.
We tried to do some rough calculations based on trying to scale it, some of these scales were very difficult to read. There's actually one that you'll see that in this packet that I've actually drawn, I'm trying to, trying to get the exact difference.
That's this one.
Yeah, oh, is it? To see, to see how we can fit storage, and obviously, the storage was a, you can actually see my little scratch out to the side where I was measuring with a microscope.
Plus, there's plenty of room on this property, Tim.
Yeah, yeah.
There is plenty of room on the property.
The other ones didn't have the room.
A large lot. You want to go through your part, and then I'll...
Yeah, sure. So we start with Mr. Patel, the, uh, the first page, we talked about other businesses, the best Western Plus. The name, the business operate with, if selected, Buddy's Wine and, Buddy's Liquor and Wine. Anything else that looks good? The copies, if we go to the second part, the individual questionnaire relative to this, you show, you propose $2 million.
Yes, sir.
As investment, you have, you say personal capital and bank finance. And the loan you are proposing through Smart Bank, you have a letter from...
Yes. I do have actually a letter from First Volunteer and also from a Smart Bank.
Thank you.
Now, also, I'd like to say something, I know we're kind of well into this now, but, so, there were some different things that we've obviously encountered throughout some of these application processes, but one thing that I can say, the architectural drawings that was put forth from every one of these projects is fantastic, so, so definitely good work on the, the presentation part for the architectural renderings. Those elevations were great. That's, that's been across the board.
Okay, so we have a preapproval letter for this one from First Volunteer. We're good. If it's more than $2 million, how do you propose to fund the rest?
I will have, I will have my own funds, my personal funds.
Okay. And would, and any, would you have, need help from any other people, investors, you have the funds?
It would be by my, by myself.
Okay. Okay, we have your references. They're fine. Okay, Mr. Custer, I'm ready for the site plan.
Okay, so based on the site plan, obviously, I mentioned this a moment ago, I did some measurements, it did appear that there was some area for storage, however, it wasn't actually placed within the, the drawing itself, and I know that, that's, some of that's confusing because there was a real heavy focus on the retail sales space area, but the discussions and having to have that stored, so you just didn't have clutter everywhere and boxes everywhere was one thing that threw the building of the ordinance that was just stressed so often, so that's why we made sure we were trying to push that. Yeah, and it's, it's a very large document, and we're just trying to, we're trying to get through it and make sure that it's, it's concise, so whatever, whoever ends up with this and the product that comes out is the product that was intended to come out.
I appreciate that, and I, I reviewed the ordinance, I see where you listed it, and I, I had missed it in my review of the requirements, but I just did want to reiterate that there, there is space to deal with it here.
Absolutely, absolutely, and I appreciate that. Looking at the parking, it appears that you're, you do have some parking excess. I will tell you that this is, this is a challenging site. This site, if you think about the store that's just adjacent to it, the Dollar General Store, you're looking at some, an elevation of somewhere about six or eight feet to get to pad. That sits about 146 feet, give or take, from the right away, which is going to push you further back. Now, the further you push back, the closer you get to the floodway. Once you get to the, if the building itself is going to hit in the floodway, then that's when it's a full-blown flood study, you have to get a Quomar, you're, you're, you're in a 12-month process from, from the time that that building hits that corner, basically, so. And that's, not all, all flood studies take that long, but flood study, get through the process, sign it, the review and comment period, it's roughly 12 months. So, as you see that and look at the, it's still a viable project as it sits today because it's just within the 100-year flood plain, if that has to shift, that could become somewhat challenging, so just be mindful of that.
And that could be a problem, because, as you know, in the ordinance, it states, it states at the beginning you have six months, okay? That's there on purpose to make sure things are happening on the property. Then there's two, three-month extensions that are allowed with it as well as the property progresses, so like basically, if it's dirt after six months,
Right.
it's not, it's not going to get a three-month extension.
So I just, I pulled this layer so you could actually see it.
Okay.
You may have pulled it up, you may have pulled the later up, have you seen this layer?
I actually did, yes.
Okay, okay, so you know, you know what I'm saying?
I know, I'm trying to back up on the...
And obviously, those lines aren't 100% accurate because you're looking, you're looking down on it, right? So, there's, go by the firm maps and get something a little bit closer. But just if you go by what's directly next to it, I mean, you can see where they had to get their elevation certificate, what that elevation looks like, it's going to be similar to that. So also, with that elevation gain, obviously, that's why it sits so far back because of the approach and access to Ringo Road, so just something to consider.
And probably sitting that far back, it might hit the edge of that.
Very well could.
As we looked at it.
Very well could.
And the expense of bringing this up to that level might be more than the building and store's worth, so something you need to think about. Agree? Expenses to...
Yes, any, any time when you get to elevating property, there's some unintended, unintended expenditures.
Could be a lot on this property. With that being said, everything else in here, it looks okay. I'm just worried about being able, especially if you have to deal with TDEC and all that, and all the flood issues which you may not have known about at the beginning, that's going to be a big problem on this property.
Well, we'll try to, you know, try to run the process real fast, you know, and see if...
I'll say good luck with that, you're dealing with TDEC. Uh, we've dealt with TDEC and, on a few projects, and I'm being recorded, so I won't say anything too negative on TDEC. It's a state, state organization.
Essentially, once, once you, once it started actually being engineered, you're going to be able to lay this out on elevation pretty good, and know whether that back corner is actually going to clip that floodway. If that back corner's not going to clip the floodway, then you're just doing a floodplain development permit, you'll have to get your elevation certificates that, you know, as we get to that first, one foot above base flood elevation, which is going to be literally almost a similar site to what's adjacent to you. The way that floodway does it, it just wraps around, comes off Spring Creek. So, it, it is a probable project, if you have to shift it further back, it's, it's going to become somewhat of an issue for you.
How long would it take to figure that out? In other words, before we did the drawing next Thursday, would we be able to find out if this is still a viable piece of property? Because if he goes to TDEC and that building's out there, it's never going to get done in time. It's not going to meet our requirements.
Essentially, there would have to be a survey done rather quickly, just to do some elevations, set some pins, basically where you propose the building's going to go. And be conservative on that, that way you know roughly where it's going to hit.
You would have to have a survey by next Thursday?
Yes, because I want to make sure the property's still...
It could be rough, but it's, it is possible to, at least get them to pull some, to pull some data from that, and at least for the elevations. I mean, we can get, we can get rough elevations for that area, but, but it's not extremely accurate, so you don't have to provide that.
Okay.
Because if the building clips that, that floodway, it's not, it's, you're not going to get it done in time.
Okay. But we could relocate some of the parking that's in the front of the building to the back of the building.
And, yes, and as long as you meet your transition period and your slopes, you could do that. It may just require you to have a rear entrance, which may be cumbersome for you all, but it, it could work that way, yeah.
And just remember, you won't, you won't be able to have that large of an entrance either. The curb cut.
Okay, yes.
We talked about earlier.
Yes, we did talk about that.
So, some of that parking may not work either.
Yeah, just be mindful of some of those, I know this was all preliminary, but just be thinking about what that next step's going to be to, to make sure you're where you're at, so.
So what time do you want us to have that by, Kenny? We need to have it like noon Thursday? At the latest by noon Thursday, so we can determine if your property's still viable.
And for that, for that clarification, you would like to have a survey with the topographies and then the location of the building?
Yeah, just some topo, some topo right there on that property, and then just a general layout of the building to see if it's going to have to shift one way or the other, and if it avoids that, that, the floodway line, I think we're going to be in good shape.
Okay.
It's just, you don't want that building hitting within that floodway and triggering, you know, the full-blown flood study, having to go through a Quomar.
Right.
Complete review process, and, and it's there for protection, it's a, it's a good, I mean, it's good that it's there, but you're so close within three to five feet of whether that's going to be an issue or not, so.
Okay.
And one question that I have, I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
Your estimated proposed investment is $2 million, did, did that factor in this elevation raise that's going to be required?
The way it did.
Well, I mean, you know, at that, until now, we haven't thought of it, but
Okay.
if you have to go beyond that point, you know, beyond that money, I still have my personal fund that I can manage on it.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll need to know by noon Thursday if that property is still viable. Anything else, Mr. Custer?
No, that's all I have at the moment.
Any comments from counsel?
I kind of jumped in, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Arjun Patel at 5715 Ringo Road. Good evening.
Good evening.
Looking through your application, we show that you're, this is where the Stereo City is, correct?
Yes.
Okay, we're showing that you are planning to, you have a contract to be able to purchase that property. Popular name, Eastridge Wine and Spirits. Bank of Cleveland. Amount of capital, $3 million for this property. Your source is personal funds and bank loan, savings maybe in Pinnacle Bank, you say you, $2.05 million from the Bank of Cleveland, do you have a loan certification letter to that effect? Thank you. Pre-approved, okay. With that being said, you have your history, you show your references. Commercial purchase agreement online, because I have the full copy. The, yeah, let's stick to that one for the moment. The diagram for the site, do you want to take over at this point, Kenny?
So, we're looking at 10,400 square foot building. It looks somewhere based on parking, it's a building parking, 42 with 47, so it's around plus five spaces. Basically what I was...
Basically what I'm seeing, um, this site itself does have some significant challenges. Um, you do have, this one, so the current building there is around six thousand, maybe sixty-two hundred square feet. Uh, sits within twenty, fifteen to twenty feet from the roadway. I believe your proposed location is to move that property back and against the property line and turn the building long ways as it would currently, you know, take the building that's there now, turn it and increase it essentially, right? By doing that, you know, obviously the scale was kind of difficult to work with and be able to see that, but I, I seen where it was somewhere around eighty foot from the road, give or take. Um, based on the front corner and the back corner on rough measurements, it put the back of your building within the floodway. Um, the floodway runs significantly through this property.
Well, it's right next to Spring Creek.
Yes, it is absolutely adjacent to Spring Creek. Um, I don't know if you all looked at that on the front end of this, but, um, but we're trying to figure out how to navigate it around and move it back to get it out of the floodway. I completely understand that. It, it, without it being in the floodway, you'd, you still have some hurdles because you're definitely adjacent to the creek. You're still going to have to go through, um, the floodplain development permit regardless. But your building is actually shown. If you took your diagram, the current flood plan, laid it up on the GIS and did an overlay, that building does sit within the floodway, which would not make this a viable project based on a, a timeline to turn that around.
So how much, so that property, that building, no matter what, what, what they do is, would be in that floodway for this property?
Yeah, the, the floodway actually, matter of fact, I've got a, the floodway map for that location. I, I don't know if you've seen it, if you would like to sit, if you want to walk over here, I can just kind of talk to you about a few things so you can actually see what I'm saying. If you would, just explain to them what you just told me.
Had my engineer glance at it too, and he said that there is stuff that can be done. And we have options to make it happen.
Okay, well, I'm not sure what that, what that means, the options to make it happen. If it's totally within the floodway, it's going to, from the engineers we've talked to, it's going to take a twelve-month process just for TDEC and the Clomar, right, and all those sorts of things. Unless I'm missing something.
The, the challenge, again, the challenge is, is one, the elevation, if you think, you're, this property is on the lowest side of the, the adjacent properties, if you start with the, the Dollar Store, I keep using Dollar Store reference. So you could be somewhere six, eight, ten foot, um, of elevation change between the three lots. Uh, once you hit that eight, ten foot elevation range, that's going to cause your building to sit further back because of your Ringo Road transition. So all that has to be taken into account under that plan review process that would have to go to the state also to be reviewed for your access on the Ringo Road. So again, to me, this was a, you know, I think this is one we discussed. Uh, we, we, we played with this and moved it around, manipulated it, tried to figure out how, how to, to get it to fit, and it still keeps clipping that corner, the floodway. I'm not saying that an engineer couldn't fix that. I'm just saying when it's presented to us, it, it's not currently.
And even, you know, can you build on that site? Yes. But it's a very long process to get something built on that site. And we have a certain timeline that's in the ordinances of how we have to do all this as well.
Essentially, to build what you proposed is, is a timeline that would far exceed what the allowable timeline is within the ordinance.
That's twelve months with the city and then I can apply it to the state and have my license before that twelve months is up.
In other words, you have six months, then there's two, three-month extensions. So if there's no pro- no progress in six months, we probably won't do an extension, uh, because state, sorry, state agencies are very slow. Uh, as, as we've been dealing with, a lot of it's the workload they have. I'm not trying to say they're, you know, it's the workload, the things they have to go through. They're just slow. Um, we've been dealing with TDEC, we've been dealing with other agencies, and it's taking a very, very long time. And I don't see, like I said, could this be built here? Yes. Can it be built and started within six months and then completed within twelve? I highly doubt it. And other engineers have stated that as well to us.
Yeah, the, the engineering process itself, a- and, and it's going to vary based on what data is available because you got to request a lot of data from FEMA. Once it comes, once the application starts, it goes to FEMA, FEMA reviews it, and that's after a flood study's done, the flood study's done, they get all the information they need. Then you're at a ninety-day, uh, basically communication portion to where they have ninety days to respond with comments. At the eighty-ninth day generally, which has just happened on a recent flood study, eighty-ninth day, they send it back for, um, for local com- uh, for local comments. So local comments then had ninety days again. Then when we send it back, they always have comments again. So you go two or three times of those ninety-day periods and they start adding up. So that's how you end up getting to close to your, your process before the permitting actually goes through. And, and the reason being is because it, it's not whether it been a floodplain, but the floodway, and that it directly can impact all the residential properties that's on the right-hand side of you. So that requires notification for each one of those properties that the floodway may be altered. And if the floodway's altered, then that's, they have to have notification that it could create a rise within that floodway and they get a no rise, the flood study has to be done to determine how do you develop that no rise or that point zero one percent of a rise. So it, it's a pretty daunting task. I'm not saying it's absolutely impossible. The building gets shifted up, parking goes to the rear, do some things like that, maybe it happens. But as it sits right now.
But I'm still concerned that none of this was taken into account with the application. So, I mean, if we do this drawing next week, there's no way this building qualifies. Because some of this should have already been taken into account when the application was done, when the land was looked at. There has to be some due diligence, I'm sorry, when we go through this application process. You know, some of these we've seen there has not been due diligence.
And, and I'm not an engineer. I'll be the first to tell you.
But looking at the floodway, I don't see how this is a viable property.
Well, and if I may add.
Yes.
Additionally, with the information that we're finding out with the floodway and everything, the three million dollars is probably going to go extremely high. Would, would you?
Right.
Agree?
Good.
And until then, I don't know if that's even viable project for you. So that's nothing to consider.
Just to give you an idea, just to elevate a pad and do a parcel in the back of this property that wasn't within the floodway because they ran into some environmental hurdles within that whole site, that rear site area back there. Um, on, uh, they wanted them to do a, a core sample. TDEC came out, wanted to do a core sample. They found some dirt, um, sixteen, eighteen foot down that they were a little bit concerned a bit with, and that was put in a, about a six, seven-month holding, um, pattern until they determine whether it was a true wetland designation or not. So because all that floods on a regular basis, a lot of water gets in there. So you do have some environmental hurdles that you would have to overcome. So I'm not saying it's not a project that, that can't be done. I'm just saying upfront, you need to know if, if it's, they discuss it and think it's a viable project, that you, you could be up against some, some pretty significant challenges to get it done. It'd be a good location for me. I mean, all those locations right there are great. They just, being that close to the, that Spring Creek does create a little bit of challenge.
Mr. Custer, can you kind of explain that, maybe there's a distinction that might be, um, of benefit to explain between the hundred-year flood and the floodway?
Yeah, so the floodway is what's directly impacted. The, the floodway is generally a no build, um, without, uh, significant approval processes because you can't alter the floodway, um, on purpose. So the idea of that is if you alter the floodway, the floodway's guaranteed, the hundred year is basically, there's a one, one hundred chance that you're going to, one out of a hundred chances that you're going to get it over a hundred-year period, one in a hundred years. The, the floodway, like I say, is very restrictive. Um, floodplain just requires you to do a, a floodplain development permit or substantial improvement permit, uh, comes through, goes through us, we get ele- you know, your engineers, they do elevation surveys. They tell us what the, what they want to bring in for fill, how the fills are going to look. Uh, then we shoot another elevation certificate and, or we shoot another elevation, get another elevation certificate, and then all this stuff has to be kept on file because of an audit. So then TDEC comes in and audited us on all the projects that we have to go on, that has going on within the floodway, and they'll go back the last six years. So, and that's for the National Flood Insurance Rate Program. So basically the, the National Flood Program is what, uh, the insurance rates for everybody that sits within the floodplain, that's, that's what that's based off of. Now, we're taking kind of some different efforts and education and stuff to try to lower those premiums anyway, if we can do a few things to get it ten percent. So we're frowning on the floodway development, floodplain development, because the city as does have a lot of, of floodplain to do that, but to do it with other mitigation and as safely as possible to limit impacts on future properties. Because we know that if we do it correctly, just by doing the, uh, coming up with a significant drainage plan, whether it's some detention, retention, and then also getting the water from point A to point B a little faster, we've seen and it's proven that there's less flooding by doing that, there's less impact. So you can improve those areas, but the process to do that, they just, FEMA wants more guarantees of that this is what it's going to do, be done. Once your project's even approved and it gets built, you have to actually send as-builts back to FEMA for them to approve to make sure that it was done according to the specs that you said it was going to be. So like I say, it, it could be a pretty daunting task.
And as I said, some of this should have been done ahead of time, um, for this. It's not up for us to guess on some of those issues. So with that being said, the one just before you barely may clip it. And we told them they had to come back with a survey to show that it worked. This one's definitely in it.
Yes.
Correct?
Yeah, from, from what I can tell.
I don't see any way.
Based on the, based on the measurements that's provided, the back of the building would be within the floodway.
Right. So with that, unfortunately, I don't see it as a viable property.
Can we not, can I not readjust it?
I don't think it'll still fit.
Well, I mean, the, the only way that it could potentially fit would be required to move the, the building closer to the road, move parking to the rear. But then again, you get into your elevation, um, changes, which is a, a, a whole different department with TDEC that has to approve that, that approach to get you from Ringo Road to your building, which if you have to sit back, you know, the hundred and forty feet, then you're way into it. If they're, if you want to be able to come back and do sixty feet, then you may be completely out of it. None of that's depicted on this, and that's why this body has to decide whether this application stays as a hypothetical, for you to, to be considered in the, a drawing based on a project that is really unknown whether it, it can actually be fulfilled or not.
Right. So to me, there should be more due diligence on the front end on this, to be able to answer some of the questions on this that we have. So with that being said, I, I don't see it as a viable property. Any other comments? Mark? No?
If I, if I bring, um, other evidence or whatever from the engineer and.
But if it's on that property, if you can show me the building's not going to be in the floodway, like the, the person just before you, that's one thing. But if it's going to be in the floodway, there's no way you're going to get it done in our timeline. With the engineers we've talked to, there's no way you'll get it done. You, you won't be digging in six months. No way. Please correct if I'm wrong, Kenny.
No, that, that's correct. And if that's the case, then I think that call, that, that would, would, Mark, you may be able to correct me if I'm wrong. That's going to require maybe some timeline shifts on application amendments.
Yeah, we wouldn't. We wouldn't know that until we got that back from, I mean, you'd have, you would, the only way you would know that is once the permitting came through, and, and we don't have that here. Um, I, I, I see that the, I'm looking at the same stuff that y'all are looking at here. What's the only way you would know if there's a way to get that done within the, the six-month period?
Well, you know, I, I'm one of the ones that, you, you don't want to say no until you have to, right? So I mean, you look at all, everything that's available and see if you can make it work. Um, a- and, and I think there's probably a solution that it could, but it's, it's a lot slimmer than.
And there's unknowns right now, where some of this could have been answered beforehand, but, so that's why, to me, it's still not a viable property. I mean, you, can you build one there? Yeah. But can you build it within the timeline? I don't think so. That's the issue here. Um.
Hey, Chris?
Yes.
You gave that other individual till Thursday by noon to produce some documentation. Can we do the same for him?
If he can keep it out of the floodway, but the whole bill, on this one, the first one, correct if I'm wrong, the first one, the building was barely touching the floodway. If he could produce documentation that the building was out of the floodway, he's fine. On the drawing on this one, can this building be out of the floodway?
Well, I, so I, I think that's a, a discussion that needs to be had on.
If he could show me it's out of the floodway, I totally agree.
Well, i- i- is that going to expand into further amendments to applications?
What does that mean?
So if they bring another document, an engineering document in, is that going to allow other amendments to applications?
No, no, because all we're doing, we just want to make sure it'll fit on his property. To me, it's a clarification as opposed to an amendment, but if you're, I mean, you told me before, and y'all, when y'all looked at it, there's no way it can fit on that piece of property.
I, I don't see how it fits. But I'm just asking if, how, how.
That's why I said no.
Yeah, how amendments are going to work.
Yeah. So I said no. And I'll see it fitting. Unlike the other one, which could fit, you know, it's, that's fine, but this one, there's, there's no way the building can fit. And just an engineer coming in saying, oh, we'll make sure we get it done in time, doesn't mean anything when you deal with a state agency. And no way the building cannot be on the floodway.
Previous, and you're just verifying with a survey whether their site plan fit or not.
Correct.
This one, you know.
We know it doesn't.
No, it doesn't.
Yeah, even without a survey. The survey would clarify that and make it, and I'd feel more comfortable with that, don't get me wrong, because like I say, I'm not an engineer or a surveyor. But if we're going through that, those type of amendments, we got to know what amendments are allowed to be brought back and what aren't.
Right.
Or clarifications.
Yeah, I think, I think the correct word is a clarification on the previous one and not an amendment.
Right.
Yes.
So do you think you can bring back a building that's not in the floodway? And I don't think an engineer can. If, if he could have the engineer prove it's not in the floodway, then like the other one, they could have till noon on Thursday. You build it up, like I said, you have to build up any of the parkings, any of that can impact, which TDEC gets involved? These are some questions that should have been answered way before today. Or you should have, you know, with your engineer, whatever, been able to answer these questions for us today. Maybe he's looking up something.
Overlay.
Okay.
I don't know. So the current building is just barely touching.
Yeah. Mr. Custer, you know what the current size of the building, of the existing building is?
Existing with, I want to say it's like sixty-two hundred eighty-seven square feet, give or take. So I, I ran some GIS numbers on that and measured it. What's it showing?
Let me go here. Um, at least by the Hamilton County, it has it at sixty-two hundred and twenty-two feet, square feet, built in nineteen fifty-eight.
Close. Is that building in the floodway?
The back right looks like it's touching, doesn't it?
I mean, I can't zoom in all the way. But I couldn't say definitively, just, it's in a hundred year without a doubt. But that, but the, but the floodway, I just can't say if that current existing building is touching, um, based upon this, what I'm seeing here.
So what, basically what we did is when we were measuring this out, we took the existing building, turned it sideways, added four thousand square foot to it to equal the square footage, and it put the corner as it currently sits. And that's not by moving it back, that's not considering elevation transitions from Ringo Road. That's just taking the current building, turning it back on the property line, adding four thousand square foot to it based on the linear, the hundred and thirty-one foot of depth.
And it was in the floodway.
And you're saying with raising the elevation and having the correct rise, it could even push it back even further into the floodway.
Because you can't go like this to get to Ringo Road.
Right.
Certain grade you got to have.
All right, so Mr. Custer, you took efforts to try to figure out configuring based upon the ten thousand four hundred eighty square feet, whether or not you could get this structure outside of the floodway, is that correct?
Myself, uh, the chief building official, uh, and the residential inspector all tried to. Myself, uh, the chief building official, uh, and the residential inspector, all tried to make these measurements work. Come up with solutions for this, for this one parcel, uh, just proximity to Spring Creek.
So now, Mr. Dorsey comes to, do you want to allow the applicant opportunity to seek a clarification as to whether or not the building that was proposed here, the 10,480 square feet, is able to be put on this with, such as not in the floodway?
I would afford him to say have opportunity is the one we had before, but this means it's gonna have to be surveyed, and it's gonna have to be shown with the issues of the height at Ringo, you just can't. These were done without any surveys, you know, some of these were. They were done with, and even though the architectural drawings are very nice, they were done without thought of topography or any other domain issues that, that should have been looked at when you, when you looked at this property. With that being said, you just can't draw another one on here. You're gonna have to be able to show that it can, that you'd be able to go from Ringo Road up to this property, and that the property would still be out of the floodway. And with that, you're also talking a very large expense to be able to move this up six feet?
Could be greater. Like I say, I don't know exactly what the elevation is right there. Mark, you might be able to run.
Worth doing the property.
Are you on GIS right now?
Uh, I am.
See if you can pull contours and just see roughly what that contour is right there.
That I may need help with.
Okay. 10-foot?
All right, Mr. Patel, do you understand what Mr. Dorsey is asking you to do on this one? All right. You can't bring this back, not this. You're gonna have to do it. If I understand and make sure that, I get the vernacular right. You want a survey that would actually be able to demonstrate that this existing building, um, of the 10,480 can be clarified such that it can fit outside of the floodway, but you're gonna have to include in there your topography, anything of the raising, any requirements, is it, I mean, do you want him to get engineering information?
It'll just be beat, it'll, I mean, it'll be bra, uh, I'm, excuse me, it'll be brief based on, we know it's gonna be roughly 10-foot, but, you know, what the pad level's gonna be, and that pad level's gonna determine probably what that elevation's gotta be from, um, from the Ringo Road access, which is actually gonna determine how far the setback actually has to be outside of the normal 25-foot setback.
But I think it's also.
I think it was listed at about 83, 86 feet off the, uh, from the edge of right away, um, best I could tell.
And as we've already said, you've had three people attempt it.
Yeah, I mean, just because I was looking at it, I, I wanted somebody else. Do what?
You're right, we're not engineers, but.
Well, and I think we also need to, you need to consider in the, the additional cost for this. I mean, you're talking 10 feet. I mean, it's rough swag. What do you think? Do you have a guess? No?
I mean, a lot more than what's on here.
It's gonna push way over the 3 million that you're proposing for the current. Are, are you wanting to, that to be considered?
This price may double.
Are you, are you wanting to have that be considered? You do?
Good with that? Okay, so by, again, by noon on Thursday, you gotta be able to prove that that's out of the floodway. If it's in the floodway, it's not gonna work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have the address of 5,800 Ringo Road. And, um, is it Sarish Kumar Patel? Hello. Uh, 5,800 Ringo Road. And for this, this one property, we have my list. One, two, three, four, five different applicants utilizing this one property. So if any of, if I were to ask if they wanna come up, or if they wanna, if they may have questions at the end, we'll, we'll get to those as well. You're just first on the list. With that being said, looking through this, we have the, uh, business operating under Galaxy Liquors. Okay, we go back, um, capital to invest in the project, uh, 2 million, personal capital and bank finance, and then smart bank is the investment. Do you have a certification letter? Do you have a, a loan certification letter?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Do you have any other loan certification letters? Everybody else has been bringing two, that's what I'm asking.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Because on this one, it just says that you've been approached about pertaining in financing, but it doesn't say you're, you're approved or you have a certification for a loan for that property.
Uh, yes, sir. We have this lease out. There's a property owner, they have a lease me, and, uh.
Okay. Okay, we'll keep, we'll keep going, we'll keep going.
I think we have an application inside.
As we do go through this, obviously, uh, somebody's planning on building this and then leasing it to one of you all.
Yes, sir.
Okay, with that being said, on the lease agreement, which reserves the, the site for you and everything else, the lease agreement that we have shows that they are, are planning to build, uh, it says premises, which is located approximately, shown in Renter Schedule A, attached to Incorporated, uh, and comprises a leasable area of 7,500 square feet. So your lease is only for 7,500 square feet. Then you get to the site plan. Our site plan. But the site plan shows a building of 8992 square feet. It doesn't match the lease. And many of your leases only for 7,500 square feet, which will not fit a 7,000-square-foot liquor store. Starting with that, that's one issue I see on the property. Kenny, do you wanna talk about the, the parking and all that for me, please?
Yeah, a- again, this is a, this is actually a great corner lot. However, traditionally, uh, due to the age of that, uh, the building that sits there, it's got that same parking from, that we've seen in the, you know, 3,030, whatever it was, 3,903, give it, give or take, uh, block of Ringo Road. Your spaces are going to back into the, um, into the right away, so there's some significant challenge there. Also, uh, based on the size of the square foot, it's severely deficient in.
It is deficient, yes.
In, in spaces.
And that, um, so there's no, I know that the, the parking ordinance is an East Ridge, like the East Ridge ordinance.
Yeah.
But there's gonna be no variation, like no, n- no offer.
No, no, variances are allowed. The, the, the problem is, is that nobody came in saying that they were gonna potentially need a variance, but the other side of that is, is we're, that, nobody within this body approves the variance. The variance actually goes to the Board of Zoning Appeals. If the Board of Zoning Appeals does, denies the variance outright because it's, you know, greater than 10% or 15%, then the only remedy you have after that, um, since they're quasi-judicial, is, um, have to take them to chance record, or have to take.
I understand.
And this has less than half the spaces that are needed for this building. So to be able to, and the other problem is, even if you got a variance, Kenny, right, these all back onto Ringo Road.
They do.
And do that once you Chang, once you, like we talked about earlier tonight. Once you do, so none of those spaces are gonna work.
I, I, we did spend some considerable amount of time, uh, taking the existing building and trying to draw and overlay, um, just, just kinda scratching that in to see if there was a way to get an alley large enough in the back to, to get some 90s with a correct, um, drive aisle width, and we, we, we couldn't pull it off based on the site and the size of the building.
And I also tried to configure it in multiple ways, and the liquor ordinance does say, I believe, that the building has to be all one level, right, so.
Uh, the, I don't believe it has to be all one level.
Logan says it has to be on the bottom level, too.
Yeah, it has to be on the bottom level.
You have a two-level liquor store, no.
Right. So it has to be, yeah, just a single store. So, um, to achieve the 7,000 square foot of retail space, and um, we did try multiple ways of working it. Of course, we tried with the curb cuts originally because that's just safer generally, and I, but then, since it was existing, we got as close as we could and as many spaces as we could, so.
I, I understand. But is there any opportunity for acquisition of the, the, the property in the rear? I mean, the, the only thing I put together just in my head the other day was that the only thing I think that makes that a viable project, if that was acquired, uh, 'cause that would be able, you could either, you could either push your building completely up, um, and actually have it flush with Ringo Road, right there with that corner. Um, you still have to have, you, you still really have to have the 25-foot off that corner 'cause you're in that intersection, but you could really push it up a lot closer and then start focusing more on that rear parking, um, and, and maybe able to pull it off that way, but, I mean, that, that's nearly a complete redesign. Uh, and, and would require, you know, a potential letter of intent or whatever on the.
To purchase the property behind this one.
But none of that was done beforehand. So I'm, I'm sorry, but I just don't see how this piece of property can, can fit with what we're trying to do here. I appreciate you coming in. I just don't see how the 5,800 can, can meet the requirements that we have. But thank you for coming, sir.
Thank you.
Does anybody else that have, that has an application for 5,800 wish to speak? Yes, sir.
Are, are all of the ones for 5,800 Ringo Road, are they the same layout and the same plan?
Yes, it's the same application, almost the same application, the same layout, the same plan. Yes. Okay, well, you're welcome to come up, sir.
Same lease and everything?
Yes, and all the leases are deficient. They're all 7,500, as opposed to the side, the size of the actual building.
Good evening, sir. How are you?
Hi.
Okay, that's my father. Uh, he's under his name. I will be just, uh, translating.
Okay.
He just understands a little bit, so just, uh, is the same, same, uh, same reason for the same site plan, right?
Yes, sir. The, um, the 5,800, uh, uh, block, the 5,800 address.
Right.
Yeah, there, there, there's no storage that's noted on the, the plans, which was already been addressed.
Right.
But there's 36 parking spaces that are needed for that site.
Okay.
Uh, there's only 17 shown, but the big problem is the, 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 the parking spots that are on Ringo Road right now.
Right.
You pull in.
Yeah.
You back, back out to Ringo Road and you go.
Right, right.
Once the building gets reconfigured.
Right.
The Tennessee Department of Transportation will not allow you to back out onto the road anymore.
Right, so it will.
You have that, they will put in a curb cut, and you will have to have parking spaces behind that.
Right.
So, th- there's no way you can have a driveway where people pull in, then pull into a parking space.
Right.
And still be able to have the, uh, the building fit there. That's why the, unfortunately, um, and like Keith said, they've, we looked, you know, just to, to try to make sure, we, we looked at all the different options.
Okay.
To try to see if we could fit the building on there.
Right.
With the parking, and we were not able to.
Okay, even after, after the new construction and everything, it's still not.
Correct.
It's not, it's not occupying.
Correct.
Okay. I would have no questions then.
Okay. Well, we thank you for coming in.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you for, for checking on that.
Thank you.
Okay, so those are all no's. Okay, we're ready for the next one? Okay, uh, we're at 5,901, 5,911 Ringo Road. Greg Atkins and Deanne Dawes and whoever else may be here. We got about four or five people on the application.
Hello, everyone.
Hey, good evening.
Hi.
Good evening.
Okay. Look at the application, East Ridge Wine and Spirits, a very popular name. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine people involved in this, in, in the application.
Mostly married couples.
Right, right. True, true, yes. I, I'll clarify that, yes. Thank you. You don't own the property, but you are planning on, uh, you have an option to purchase the property.
Correct.
Uh, that is fine. To get it afterwards. You have the names and addresses of the businesses that are, that you're actively engaged in, that's all fine. If we go back, we have the trade references. All of the backgrounds signed and notarized, quite a few pages. That's good. You show everybody that's gonna be involved in the store.
You could also have our letter from our bank. It was submitted with our application.
Yes. At. Is that we're reading all those out? Thank you. Pinnacle, yes. Okay, Pinnacle Bank, yes. Agreeable for that. And Kenny, do you wanna get the site plan for me?
Yeah, just give me a brief one. So we're showing a retail space of, uh, 10,300 square feet, uh, large storage. So the layout works, um, also incorporating a loading dock. I believe we do have more than enough parking, um, potentially a surplus on parking. So from the, from a parking standpoint, from a storage standpoint, egress, I mean, like I say, again, we could be dealing with some curb cuts that may, may change one way or the other, that may require some uh, permit, but you're not gonna require, you know, any significant elevation or anything like that, so. Um, overall, site plan and, um, and, and drawings were, were
Okay.
More than satisfactory.
10,300 retail, there is storage, um, included on the drawing. Very nice drawing. Uh, it shows all the curb cuts. So the site plan looks okay. Said all background checks have come in okay. Uh, we have the references. Everything else. We have a copy of the, um, We have a copy of the, um, contingency contract for purchase, mentioned earlier. So with this one, I don't see any issues. Did you all wanna speak at all?
We just, we, we also own the Buddy's Barbecue.
Yes, so we, we have already, uh, we just wanted to say that, you know, we love East Ridge, the city of East Ridge, we have already invested our money in the city of East Ridge with our business at Buddy's Barbecue, and we have a vision to see, uh, East Ridge grow, uh, all the way down the road, so, and that's what we would like to do with this property.
Okay, thank you. Uh, after looking through it, I, when we, obviously, like I said, we've checked all these before, we're just reviewing with counsel present, uh, I show it was an okay site plan, the, it's acceptable. We're good.
We're allowing this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have 6,009 Ringo Road, um, I'll start with, uh, Daval Patel, once again, excuse you if I butchered the name.
Good evening.
Good evening. Okay. Okay, you're planning on leasing the property, so you would be having, uh, JPP Properties build for you, correct?
Correct.
And you'll be planning on leasing the property, uh, 10-year lease, an additional 10-year option. A East Ridge Cork and Bottle, what's, it's different, I like that, um. Go back, all the questions were answered properly, we have, uh, references in here as well. Signed, um. Uh, the funds, amount of capital you propose to invest, you have a million plus, of course you're leasing, that's all different than building yourself, um, personal bank account, business bank account, equity stock accounts, uh, with those, you're saying you won't have to have a loan because you already have capital to be able to do this project since you're leasing, correct?
Correct, and I have the proof as well, if you wanna see.
Okay, yes, please. Thank you.
And there's essentially cash, liquid, liquid cash.
Yes. Uh, with that, and this is, uh, the property where I think Don Juan, as I call it, Don Juan Restaurant is now. Uh, we have references. If you're your part, Mr. Custer? You're on a roll, I was gonna let you keep doing site plans for me.
That's how we were doing some research.
Oh. Well, I can go if you want, that's fine, um.
Oh, it's okay, I got it pulled up right here. So, corner location, um, looking at 7,020 square foot of retail, an additional 3,000 square foot of storage, um, with another 980 square foot of storage, you have surplus on parking, um, plenty of ingress and egress. Uh, the site location, um, appears to be satisfactory, the, uh, amount of parking appears to be satisfactory, and I believe, um, you do have some existing curb cuts that if modified, of course, you'll have to go through that same sort of process, but overall, based on what we're looking for, um, and as it relates to the requirements in the ordinance, I think it looks good. You were required 28 spaces, requi- uh, provided 29, uh, with two ADA spaces, so. Well done.
Thank you.
So, we have no issues with that, is, I apologize, I didn't ask the last time, forgive me, uh, were there any comments or questions from counsel? If we need, I can drag the last one back up here. No? Okay, as what I see, the property is accepted, the application is acceptable. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Jingesh Patel, once again, sorry if I butchered the name.
Good evening, guys.
Good evening, and so for you, you, um, are also planning on, uh, if you do it, being able to lease the property.
Yes.
Correct?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you wore a Pinnacle shirt today. Okay, oh, you also have interest in the MJ, that's right, the MJ Liquor Wine and Beer, that's downtown.
Yes.
On Broad Street.
Yes.
And have two stores. Uh, so it's okay, we have the references, uh, do you have anything from the, the bank for me? Yes, sir. That will work. Oh, you like the account number on here, thank you, I can. We're going to Brazil, Kenny. Now, we'll be protective of that, but thank you very much, um.
I, I'll let you go, I'll stay back and work.
Okay, you can, yeah.
Somebody's gonna have to, if you go.
That's true. So with that being said, let's look through the rest of this. Um, no loan, um, I mean, in three, but of course you're leasing, you have a line of credit, and you showed me your, your, your accounts and your statements. Be all you?
Yep, yes.
Nobody else, okay. Yeah, I did, I already got some account, some state, bank statements from you, so thank you for bringing them again, I appreciate that.
I submitted in yet.
I thought they were in your application. This'll be a quick one, Kenny, to, I believe it's exact same site plan, but you can comment on it, please, that's why I want to say it's quick.
Site plan, um, meets.
Because you're leasing.
Exceeds the minimum, uh, minimum parking requirement, uh, it does have the storage listed, it actually, it has multiple storage locations listed, um, uh, corner lot, so everything appears on that basic site plan, um, to be acceptable.
Okay. Any questions or concerns from counsel? No? I would say the application is acceptable, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Tuhash Patel.
Last but not least.
That's right.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi there. I'm guessing the way the first two go, yes, you'll be leasing also.
Yes, sir.
Uh, 10-year, 10-year additional. Okay, you're not involved in another liquor store.
No, sir.
Okay. A million two, but you're leasing, as we said, uh, bank accounts, IRAs and stocks.
I did have statements, yes.
Yes, you already have some, you may already have some in here, too.
And I would like to note that these are liquid cash, I do have other investments in other properties that I did not include on there.
Okay.
Businesses that I have investments in.
These account numbers are blacked out, Kenny.
I forgot to do that. But I did put a disclaimer on page one, so.
Yes, I'm kidding, yes, thank you. Or part of your account number's blacked out, let's put it that way. Okay, um, so with that being said. For references. Lease agreement is in here, it was, it's been on all three. Kenny, site plan. Okay. Questions from counsel, concerns? Your application is acceptable, I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I wanna go back to one, what's the name? Hazmuk Patel, is that the one I wanna go back to? Yes, the, the issue, um, you know, we had some here that, that we had to, to say no to just 'cause it won't, it won't fit on the site, there's no way anything can fit on the site, right? The only issue we had on this one was his, his original, the application was signed, the, the background dealing with the, uh, the background check, that page was inadvertently not signed. A question came up that, um, since we're letting everybody, these, these other couple cure the small issue that's within their application or correct, or not even correct, what's the word?
Clarify.
Clarify, thank you, with it, um, should we go ahead and allow, because the only difference was the background check. Now, the one caveat to this is that, obviously, if, if we do the background check, it has to be here before the next Thursday.
It shall be there. I would like to mention my client, uh, he also has another liquor store, so it's one of the best liquor stores in Chattanooga.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. So, coming back to that, did counsel have any concerns or questions? We were trying to make sure we're fair with the other ones, um, so we okay to go ahead, go ahead and let him sign? Just to, we're just, all, 'cause it's a signature on the background check, not the actual application, so, so with that, okay, so we need, if we don't have a notary, we need at least get a, a signature and notaries, just, just the background check part.
No, of course, I can have it submitted tomorrow morning.
Okay, so that will be good.
Thank you.
So we'll do that. Okay. So with that being said. We're about done for the evening, quicker than I thought. In District A, we had to, just to summarize, um, 3903 Ringo Road was not viable due to, if I say something wrong here, Kenny, or leave something out, the fact of, um, it just wouldn't fit on the site, the, the parking and the issue with the, uh, the T-dot curb cuts and things like that, there was no way for that to be viable on that site.
And lack of storage.
Pardon me?
And lack of storage space.
And lack of storage, yes, to be able to fit in there as well on that piece of property. Harsh Patel at, um, 3940 Ringo Road, yours was, uh, viable, yours was good, uh, which makes you the only one with a viable application in District A. District B, we had a total of 14 that we started with, um, out of the 14, um, 1502 Maxwell, uh, was, was not viable, and 5800 Ringo Road, for the purposes of what we talked about here, were not viable, so that was one, two, three, four, five, six that were not viable, that leaves, assuming that the items we requested for clarification purposes, are turned in and are, are, are good, that we're able, that they're acceptable, we would have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven on that side. But like I said, that number could change depending on what is turned in and what is acceptable being turned in.
I've got eight.
Oh, did I count wrong?
No, I had five.
Oh, I didn't have a check by Mr. Patel, the one I just talked about, my bad, thank you.
Five were okay, and then three, we need clarification.
I didn't put a check by Mr., by the last one we just talked about, it's my bad. So we have eight, so that is at the moment where we stand. Um, I will email counsel based on the, the four that we had, or the three that we had, um, issues with that, that we need clarification on, and let you know whether those are good or not, and then we will proceed forward.
Just for the record, I still do not like the lottery. I think we were elected to make hard decisions and, and good decisions for the city, and I just don't think that the lottery is, is the best way to do this, because after looking at some. Name out of a hat, just for the record.
Thank you, thank you, of course, that's not, yes, but thank you. Uh, the one last little comment I'll make on some of these, it, well, some of these didn't have any, a lot of due diligence done when the applications were turned in, um, some of these things could have been avoided on the front end if due diligence was done, um, but that's not up to us, that's up to the applicants, so with that being said, that's why some of these turned out the way they did. I'll just leave it at that. But with that, that's, concludes our, I mean, I wanna thank, uh, I do wanna thank Kenny and, uh, Mark and our inspectors, we did, I appreciate the.
Hey, Chris.
What they did going through these.
Gentleman down here, I, I was being observant, he looked like he left and came back with something, he's been wanting to come up and talk to you again.
Oh, okay.
Have your permission.
Pardon me?
I would like to turn something in if I have your permission.
Okay, not sure what it is, but okay.
I'm not sure I'm looking at.
The parking space.
That, that, Maxwell?
Maxwell, yes. Those these been parking spaces on there?
But where, where does it say on here? Hey, Mark, you can help me on this one. I don't see where it says that you have extra parking spaces. I just may be missing it. I see a drawing that shows more parking spaces, but I don't see anything in the plat that, 'cause it just shows the surrounding properties to it. This is Maxwell.
1502.
1502 Maxwell Road.
Is this the, right in front of the J103 property?
Yes.
But is those additional parking spaces the one that we talked about, you'd have to have a, an agreement with the other land.
Right, because that's not on the same piece of property.
Yeah, so a couple, a couple things have to happen when you do that. One, you have to look and see how many spaces were, uh, originally intended for what it was developed for.
Right.
Then see what the current use is now, because those change based on whether it's an office or a beauty salon or whatever, so you could end up being a one to three versus the four per 1,000, so a lot of those can change, and that could be based on different entities that's in there.
So, so what's in there now has to have adequate parking, and they have to have overages, so then he could then benefit from that overage, is what you're saying.
What you do is you try, there's, there's two ways you can do the shared parking agreement, and parking agreements are generally, um, approved in-house, um, by the chief building official, by our department, uh, one is you have two occupancies side by side, and one, uh, one's a bank, one's a bar, so obviously, they're gonna operate primarily at two different hours, so they'll get a parking agreement for over folk parking during their peak hours, which are late afternoons and evenings. The other is, um, if you have a business that closes on certain days, uh, they open late, open early, whatever, and it is to try to maximize that space without having, what we've been discussing for the last several years, is these unlimited seas of asphalt. The other is, if you have a business that closes on certain days, they open late, open early, whatever, and it is to try to maximize that space without having, what we've been discussing for the last several years, is these unlimited seas of asphalt.
So, on Maxwell, while they're looking at that, so they had, I had three things noted, was there's no storage space. Not enough parking, which they're looking at, and then there was a curb cut issue.
Yeah, let me go back to that one. Because even that, I mean, I don't even know what that says yet, but may still not be enough room.
So, I'm seeing 32 spaces are required. Showing 19, but there would be a reduction of potentially 10, or. Trying to get my bearings here, stand up.
But that maximizes, that maximizes that space, so what does the storage do to that? Showroom square footage.
Because this is very small, the restroom closet, the office, and.
I got 8160 overall and 7100 sales floor space.
Right, and the counter is very small as it is. Like we said, none of the product can be on the floor unless it's on display. Enough storage will fit in here. Like we said, you can't back out onto Ringo Road, but it looks like there could be enough room.
That potential.
How many spots would they have to have?
32.
Does that include disabled handicap spots? Are those in addition?
Should be told.
So, we're still 13 short.
Well, and then the square footage, if, how much storage?
Right.
Footage would need, because the, the stores, is it gonna limit the store below the required minimum, adding the storage to the footprint that's here?
Looking that way about the.
From what I can tell here, you've got exclusive for sev, for 15 parking lots, there are spaces on another lot that appear to be part of an easement dedicated for Lot 1, which on this plat appears to be the building. We've got, the issue, as I understand it, is to pull out on the curb, right, Mr. Custer?
That's correct.
All right, and then you need to have 32 spaces available?
That's correct.
So, he's got?
Access to 32 spaces.
And landscaping was an issue as well.
Ah, okay.
Right, because you, you're showing them backing on, also onto Maxwell.
Yeah.
Part of the zoning.
I think, if I'm hearing it right, that'd require a variance, is what that would require from the, from landscaping, correct?
Yeah, that, that building is overly large for that.
Right.
To be able to make it work, be contained, meet the landscaping requirement, meet the parking requirement. Now, shared parking, like I say, that's something that's, that's doable, as long as that plan's put together upfront, but even if the lease, this would be a lease or a purchase.
Oh, purchase.
Yeah, so you'd be purchasing this, but then entering into a, an agreement with the owner of the rest of the complex, correct? Without it, there's, there's no guarantee, I mean, that's something else they could bring back.
Well, I, I think we need to look at the, the storage space, too, because if we insert the stor, the required storage space, which, remind me what that is, then that may mean that the store itself needs to increase, which is now gonna impact more parking spaces.
Then you'd be short more than 13, because this diagram only shows 15.
Well, and that's the issue with the scale, I've been able to measure this out. I mean, because you're, right now, you're saying that, um, just roughly.
Most of the storage spaces have been what?
Chris, do we have a requirement on how much storage space they have to have?
No, but they have to store it off the display floor. So, I mean, you couldn't have a little closet for a storage space, they have to be able to have enough room to store their product off the.
How much space do you think is?
I don't know, the other ones, we've had some with 1,000 square feet of storage, 600 square feet of storage. I mean, you've got a lot of product, you're gonna have the.
What's, what's the difference here? I can't read this.
It's only 100, it's, it's showing 7,100 feet, 7,100 square feet.
The 1,000 square foot.
Oh, no, but, but the actual, yes, but the actual retail that's being shown after the office and the restroom and all that is only 7,100 square feet.
And you, you won't have enough room in 100 square feet, a 10 by 10 little, like a bedroom.
That's been my challenge.
This won't fit.
With a lot of these applications that didn't have storage. They, they have a, so, for example, this, a cigar room, their checkout area, a closet, two small public restrooms, 1,000 square feet. That math just doesn't add up to me.
But that's not for us to determine.
No, I'm not saying that.
They brought that to us.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just saying.
Back to due diligence.
There has to be square footage available within these.
Right.
It just wasn't shown on the plans. It wasn't, wasn't brought to us that way.
Like the mayor says, if you add storage, you're gonna increase the size of the building, which is gonna take away some more parking spots.
Well, then, if you got, you got 10 parking spots that are backing out on Maxwell, correct? So, that's, that, that's problematic as well, an issue.
Especially with, what are the landscaping requirements?
They're pretty heavy.
All we have here is three trees.
It's not gonna do it.
So, you still don't have the room then. Right, I've still not shown the room.
No. No, I mean, it's, it's a great location, it's just the building itself, to meet the minimum square footage requirements that you have to have, is still too large for that site. If that was a two-story building, and that was allowed.
Fine, or anything else there might be fine. Okay.
Just takes up a very large footprint.
Right. I'm sorry, as far as I can tell, it's still not viable. But thank you, I appreciate you bringing that in for us, though. Hey, where was I? Oh, I was saying thank you to the, the people that helped to look through these. We, we took this very seriously, and we made sure we looked at every application and tried to, to see what we could do to make, make them work, and, and go through all the different, the different steps to show, you know, that it is important that these applications are accurate, and that we are able to, to move forward with the, the quality and meeting the guidelines that we had for the liquor stores, for this. Some of these, like I said, there wasn't a lot of, I've already said it once, there wasn't a lot of due diligence done on these, that could have been done and might have, might have helped on some of these. I'll stop with that, but otherwise, then our list still stands.
Okay. All right, thank you, and staff, for all the hard work. Do we have any other comments or questions, council?
I'd just like to say something about the Stereo City Lot down there. I've been out here a long time, and I've seen how high the water gets on that corner. It's gonna be a hard task for them to keep that building out of the flood there.
Yep, do we noted? Anyone else? Well, council, thank you very much for the work session.
Thank you all, applicants, we appreciate your interest in East Ridge. Have a very good evening.